Being seven o'clock, this meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order and is being videotaped at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street. And given the current pandemic crisis, we are, as are other boards in town, notably the Select Board, two members are participating remotely, that being John Stefek and Dave Hennessy. And the three of us are here and maintaining the appropriate separation. Phil Vasino on my left, and I'd like to welcome Bob Coulter, who is our newly elected Commissioner. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Board. And Colleen is here, and there is nobody else here because the doors are locked, and the public, if they wish to comment, will do so remotely according to the instructions on the website. We also have Mark Doxer here, the newly appointed Chair of the Select Board, who is participating remotely. You can't see him out in TV land, but he's participating remotely, as are John and David, on a Microsoft Teams link. So with that being established, Phil, are you open to being the Board's Secretary tonight?
Yes.
It seems to happen every month now.
Yes, I am.
We have a public comment now, but there is no public here. One member of the potential public would be Mark. Would you like to say anything, Mark?
Hello, everybody.
Okay. Hello back?
I'm new world.
Exactly.
Appreciate that you guys are able to do this and have it structured. I got the agenda, and I thank you guys for, folks, for listening to some of the concerns that were shared, and appreciate that we were able to talk about it a little bit, and you guys have done analysis and having the discussion.
Yep.
Thanks for...
No problem.
...the discussion.
Yep, and you're referring to the town payment, and of course, that was always the plan, and those discussions will continue and will not be concluded tonight, but glad we're moving things along, and thank you for that, Mark. And I don't think we have any...well, the cab is not here tonight, the Citizens Advisory Board, the liaison, I guess, Mark, maybe you're the liaison, but if you have anything to add to that as the Select Board liaison and public comment, so that kind of takes care of item four. Again, I'd like to welcome Robert Coulter, who goes by Bob, to the Board and introduce him to everybody. Thank you, Bob, for stepping up and for joining us, and if you'd like to just say a few words about who you are and your background, and we'd love to hear a little bit.
Yeah, sure. I grew up in Reading. I was here until I was about 21, then I left for approximately 25 years, came back about four, a little over four years ago now, came back to town. It's a lot different from when I left, you know, a lot more, reminds me a little bit more like Uber now, you know, it's a little bit more built out, there's more restaurants and retail. But came back and decided it was to end the town meeting, and it was just a time to contribute more into the community. My mom worked there for 25 years, and she loved this place, and she really did, so looked like something I do, and I'm in this business, understand it very well from the ground up, from underground up, you know? So I thought I was a good fit for this team. Maybe bring some knowledge from that industry side. I know there's other folks on the Board that have great, great skill sets, but maybe I can contribute from that manner.
Most certainly. And I understand you work for National Grid, and you were telling us earlier, what's your role at National Grid?
In National Grid, I'm a design supervisor right now, so I oversee the North Shore. I oversee roadway jobs, underground construction, overhead construction, new building, commercial construction, residential unit construction, subdivisions. So again, have a very good understanding, do a lot of third-party attachments, a lot of solar, any type of, you know, green generation we get engaged with, so understand from the engineering aspect, from the customer interaction to economic impact, and down to, you know, construction scheduling, so.
That's wonderful, and really happy to have you joining the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
And then, so now we wanted to move on to, did you want to wait on the next item, or are we good?
No, Mr. Chairman, I want to move that we take item 7B out of order.
Yep.
Please.
Yeah, good point. Phil rightly notes that we want to discuss the current pandemic and RMLD's response, and thanks for that, Phil. So, Colleen, do you want to jump and just talk a little bit about that?
Do we need to vote on that? Take it out of order?
I mean, I don't think so, but maybe we do.
Okay.
Come arrest us.
Yep.
So first, I just want to say that this is an electric utility, and we are committed to the obligation of providing safe and reliable power to the town, and we are here to respond for emergencies, and everyone should feel confident with that. This is how we've been addressing this pandemic thus far. So immediately, we established an emergency response team made up of all of the directors. There's seven of us, one from each of the divisions. We established an emergency infectious disease plan, which discusses, and it's a, they're called emergency operating procedures, EOPs, HR for who's responsible for it, and then it's given a number of the year that it's established. So all of our procedures are very detailed. Social distancing with all electrical operations assigned to individual trucks and cell phones. Facilities, we have proper signage up. The building is closed per the public health. Building HVAC filter upgrades and cleaning product upgrades specific to this particular virus. Training, except for webinars, travel, things like that are suspended. Meetings moving from less than 10 to conference calls using Zoom, Microsoft Teams. I became a member, I went from the emergency operating, planning, operating team command to a member of the Town of Reading Emergency Planning Team, which comes under command now. We respond to their command goals. We've met, we met this week, we're probably going to meet again tomorrow. The purpose of that is to make sure that we are planning with uniformity and consistency with the town. So while we service four towns, we're following the Town of Reading for health instructions of that nature. Press releases on redirecting focus away from projects and planned outages onto resiliency, troubleshooting, service connections, and non-outage maintenance work. So just a bit of a shift of focus, we developed an emergency plan of options, and what we do with that is we identify critical businesses, that's IT, electric functions, we prioritize them, and then we evaluate the ability to reform from home. We establish minimum staffing and cross-training capabilities. We're establishing, or we establish remote working procedures, and I'll get into that for a second, Team A and Team B. Team A is remote, Team B is in the office for redundancy of essential personnel until March 27th, and then we'll do a reassessment. We've established minimum stocking for one-month supply, and that's across the board, electric, IT, everything. Notified overhead and underground onsite contractors of continued work and notification of any crew member swap. We don't, because you need a minimum amount of qualified knowledgeable people of this particular system, and our onsite contractors, we have both overhead and underground, we want to maintain them, and we want to maintain those people, and we want to know if they need to swap out anybody. And then we developed a major emergency plan of operations, which is a BPO, and that kind of takes something like a COVID-19 and adds like another layer of disaster on top of that. So now you're less than minimum staffing, you're redefining your basic functions, line operations, substation operations, stockman, engineering control authorities, overhead, underground, contractors, crews, and supervisors have to be here. Shift rotation would change than just the regular hours of Team A and Team B, and then we would probably call on mutual aid, which is the other 41 municipals or anything outside of New England that could help us respond. Now, with this, so for example, with the line operations, the Town of Reading was very kind this morning at about 6:30 when I called Joe Huggins, because we were going to put Team B in one of the substations, but I don't want that contaminated, because that's a place that we have to respond to, so the town was kind enough to give us a remote location building that we can, that we can use for about six people from line operations and substation technicians, and so they'll be separated. And again, we're still continuing our business, business continuity, everything's flowing, even though some people are being able to work remote. So we're in pretty good shape from that respect so far.
Great.
So that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Did I leave out anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Phil.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm glad to hear that we're protecting our employees, but I also want to talk about the human cost that's going on here. I live near the railroad station here in Reading, and I can actually look into one of the parking lots. I am amazed that in these days, usually the only time that parking lot is empty is on the weekends, that parking lot is empty during the week.
It's amazing.
So I think people are not working, I'm very concerned about, you know, what uses there may be at this point. I also, you know, emailed, you know, earlier today that, you know, I want, you know, what we're doing for people who can't afford to pay their bills, because I think there's a real human cost that's going on here, and I think, you know, we may see less usage if businesses shut down. I heard just today on the radio coming here that TJ Maxx is going to close.
Wow.
For two weeks. So I'm concerned about what usage we've gotten and what the effect may be going forward here.
A load.
And also what we're going to do for people who cannot pay their bills at this point.
Have you already seen a load drop?
Not, not, not so far.
Okay.
But we're usually a month and a half behind with REEDs and power supply bills that are coming through.
And what about, and to Phil's question about bills, I know we're going to have some forgiveness on...
Is that on, is that on here or no? Do you want me to just talk about it?
Yeah.
Is it on here?
That'd be great.
Colleen's answer on the load drop. Colleen, what did you say to that?
Chuck, do you have an answer to that? Do you want to speak to that? I didn't realize that Chuck walked in. Chuck Gunderhill is our Integrated Resources and Power Supply Wholesale Retail Director.
I thought we had more in on there, we just got to let you see it.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening, especially to those of you at home. That sounded like Dave Hennessy, so I'm...
Yes, it was.
So you're trying it out from the audience's perspective this evening.
Just try to do what state protocols are recommended.
All right, let me take the questions in reverse order. As far as a load drop, nothing that we have seen yet. That's going to be something that's going to take a slightly sustained period of time to look at, and we have to factor out weather conditions. It's been warmer than usual, therefore, the heating load would be down anyway, so nothing that we've seen untoward.
Okay.
But we do continue to watch that. Our biggest concern would be the major manufacturers in the area and what the potential load drop from them would be. While retail impacts will be significant to the economy, they are not the largest load. They tend to be lighting and, in some instances, miscellaneous refrigeration.
Chuck, are you wondering if possible that could increase the load with all these people working from home pulling on resources from, I know residential doesn't drive our load, but with almost everybody working from home, is there a possibility it could go up since with such a residential area?
There's a very limited possibility that it would go up. The residential will help to sustain the loads that we have, but residential's about 40% of our total retail load, 60% in the commercial area, and of that, we've got about 35% in our top 20 accounts. So my suspicion is that we're more than likely to see a slight decrease, particularly the longer there are measures taken or the more aggressive those measures become to attempt to curtail the COVID virus. The grocery stores themselves, their loads are way up simply because they're moving so much refrigerated and frozen product through. Also, the shelves are cleared of pretty much everything in inventory, so traffic through there is helping things. This is going to be a topsy-turvy situation for a while, but we are keeping an eye on it in terms of loads. Now, if I might take a moment to speak to the revenue aspects of that, we are not going to shut off any residential accounts. We will work with them. We would like to, we also have to protect the other ratepayers on the system as well. And so we will work with our customers, residential and commercial, to establish what I would call probably a more lenient approach to managing revenue impacts coming in. We still need to write checks. We have to write checks for about $5.5 to $6.5 million a month for power supply. I'm in the process of digging out the most recent power supply budget that we got from Energy New England, so that I can send that to Wendy, and she will have an idea of what our cash flow requirements are going to be over the next six months to pay the power supply bills. We're coming into a slow period, so the costs will be down a little bit, but depending on how far this goes into the summer, we will be in our maximum cash flow months. So we're striking a balance, we are being fair, we are being understanding, and that's the most I can tell you right now.
Thank you.
What, excuse me, what would be the typical shut-off cycle for a customer if it was for, you know, for non-payment?
It usually goes about 45 days, and then they start to get notices, and at about 60 days, I believe, is the shut-off notice that first goes out. You can look it up, I believe we have it posted on our site, but it's certainly available on the DPU. We follow the DPU protocols.
Dave, can I add something?
Please.
So the state had sent in a letter about extending the moratorium for residential with the situation, this unprecedented situation that's going on, but typically, we work with the customers on payment plans, and we will continue to do that. We do that across for all classifications, and so we will continue to do that and work, as Chuck says, work with the customers.
Great. Anything more on this topic, Phil?
Well, if it comes to push to shove, I mean, is there a plan to cut expenses somewhere? If need be? Has it emerged as a backup plan?
Well, at this point right now, based on, you know, the two to three months of operating funds, this rate stabilization, this is exactly the conversation that we talked about in the state of emergency. So right now, we're not expecting to spend or drain any of that. As Chuck says, we have no indication of loss of load or anything. You know, combine that with a coincident failure, that may be a different aspect, but we're going to track this as we go. As Chuck says, we have to pay our bills, so we may be kind of swapping some money around within the funds to do so, but, you know, I'm going to be presenting six bid bids, and you may say to me, why are you buying all those transformers now in the middle of this? Well, I will tell you what, if we don't put in our order now, try buying a laptop. We got to put our orders in, and we have to make sure that we have the equipment that we need in order to keep people in power. So we don't have a lot of expenses that are, you know, it's only like, what are we, 20% of our operating is expenses, and the rest is power supply, and that's a pass-through. So we don't have a lot of fat in there to do that. So, but we do have to continue to keep stock in. You know, you've seen what it's like when we have a hurricane in Florida. We may not be able to get metal, metal prices go up, we can't get equipment. When you have corporations that are making switchgear and transformers and wire and stuff, that just, you know, their employees have gone home for a couple of months, you could go from a 16-week delivery to a 50-week delivery. So we need to be in the queue. So we got to keep going as if, you know, to make sure we're going to be okay.
Colleen, if I may add to that, just one comment, and that's, we've been running very, very lean, as you know, at the RMLD. Extremely, we've got probably a number of positions, employee positions, not filled for a couple of years now, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Colleen, but I think we're still down from where our expected person count should have been.
We are down right now, but we have a reorganization structure that's in front of the unions. We intend to still fill those positions based on succession and pending retirements. Those are going to be filled, it's just that they were new job descriptions and reorganizational structures. We will not ever be, probably be as high as the RMLD was at one point with about 82 or 83 people, but we are, we are below, you know, I would say below sufficient staffing by about seven or eight people between the line department and some of the succession positions of people that are going to be retiring within the next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chuck.
One question on the, you've heard of the EOPs?
Yes.
This is continuity plan, EOPs. Obviously, one's for virus people. Do you have other ones for, like, facilities and one for systems? I'm assuming that you do.
Yeah.
So I just, because, you know, Garpie's Law, something bad's going to happen on top of a virus, it'll be like something's going to blow up.
Right. No, we have, you know, the standard, I shouldn't say standard, the wrong word, we have EOPs, which are emergency operating procedures, and we have SOPs, which are standard operating procedures, and we have those in each of the divisions. It's kind of an interesting thing, we didn't really have an EOP specific for a virus, but we had an EOP for other electrical issues. So some of them you can use, and some of them you have to put an asterisk and add like a virus section to your plan. So for example, if there's a transmission issue because there's a lack of transmission staff with National Grid or Eversource, it still could result in a load reduction to us, and we would still have to implement an EOP in order to redistribute the load within our system. So there are some EOPs that we can revise slightly for a virus, but even like when you're looking at load in the summertime, you may want to stream your feeders towards a mall that has air conditioning, and everyone comes together, right? But in a virus, you want everybody home, and you want residents in power. So we're going through each of those and just making sure that our emergencies are key. You know, IT as well, you got IT infrastructure that supports a lot of our, you know, control rooms and things like that. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
People, places, and systems, right? You got to talk about all three.
Okay. All right. So I think at this point then, we can, thanks Chuck, and thanks everybody. If we can go back to item six and the update on our discussions about the payment to the Town of Reading. There's kind of three parts to this, well, we had put some things on the table as a starting point early in January, and that we sent those out for feedback. We now have some feedback from the CAB, the Citizens Advisory Board, and from the Select Board, so, Colleen, and then Colleen has given a memo that's in the Board book about her current thoughts, so do you want to walk us through those three pieces?
Sure. Are you familiar with, can I give like just a little recap? Okay, good. So back in 2018, Wendy Markowitz, who's not here, she's our Director of Business Finance, and I were looking at the projections going forward, and the Town of Reading payment was based on a CPI increase every year, and we are limited to making up to 8% of net plant, but generally, in order to stay competitive with the rest of the municipals, around 6% is where we, between 4.5% to 6% is where we need to land. Because there was a lack of maintenance really done here for many years, couple of decades, we came up with a capital improvement plan that we increased that rate of return in order to put some money to make these changes quickly, and they were, the failure analysis on poles and transformers was going faster than something that you could just do a long-term plan or bonding on or whatever. So the study that I did showed that there would be a convergence between what was being paid to the town and where we were going to be landing on our rate of return, and it was crossing. So I just, you know, told the Board that we needed to retake a look at the formula and go from a CPI, and my study had said go to a mills per kilowatt hour sales, which was more indicative of the health of the utility. I was asked to get basically a second study opinion, which we asked Energy New England to do, and they pretty much came up with the same thing, with around three mills being the target area. We pay out two in lieu of tax payment, one is below the line to the Town of Reading, which is about $2.5 million a year, and then we pay out above the line, about $1.5 million, and that's 2% of net plant that's then distributed to each of the towns, including Reading, based on their load. So fast forward, you know, coming down from the 2.5 with a loss of kilowatt hours, down to about three mills showed a loss to the town. The town, my understanding is they were looking for a sense of stability, you know, a loss of any kind of money is an adverse impact to their operations and budget, but at the same time, I have a fiduciary duty to the customers of the RMLD. It is a voluntary payment by law under Chapter 164. Wendy and I have scrubbed the data over and over and over again. We were extremely appreciative and grateful that the town sent in some proposals, but those proposals were related to a revenue formula instead of a kilowatt hour formula. So I will, that kind of catches me up, catches us up a little bit, so...
We'll be a quiz on this later, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay?
I have the financial chart in my pocket, if anybody wants to see it.
So basically, the memo says that Wendy and I had had a chance to review the payment proposals from the Town of Reading. The RMLD does not recommend, and this is consistent with my original plan, the, actually, Bob, the studies of my 2018 and the ENE are both on the website, under Board of Directors on the left-hand side. You can find all of the studies that were done in your folder.
In my folder.
Oh, you're good.
Excellent.
The RMLD does not recommend a formula based on revenue. Base revenue is the only component the RMLD can control to ensure that the RMLD covers its cost of production, which is a law. As a reminder, power supply is approximately 75% of the budget and is purely a pass-through, which means we don't, we can't make that up to 8% on power supply. It's, whatever comes in goes out, there's nothing. By utilizing the revenue or the combination of a revenue and kilowatt hour sales as proposed by the town, a base rate increase, and right now, unlikely based on an increase in sales to support our operations, would result in the town receiving that increase or a portion thereof, resulting in a higher rate increase to the RMLD customers. The combination of the revenue and kilowatt hour negates the RMLD's ability to strategize, to stabilize its rate of return, capital funds, kilowatt hour sale fluctuation, cost of living, and operational business in general. The RMLD understands and appreciates that the Town of Reading's concerns and the intent of their proposals. The RMLD remains focused on its original two studies in that a unit of kilowatt hour sales is the best business model for the RMLD. While sales have a flat to slight decreasing trend for the short term, the recent capacity auction came in lower than projected, but the transmission costs are escalating, but a slight margin emerged. We have re-analyzed our previous recommendations, while we are confident that the escalated above-industry trend above the study, which was three mills, but our recommendation was of 3.75 mills of kilowatt hour sales, adjusted annually by audited financials, remains acceptably commensurate with our fiduciary duty for the RMLD and its customers. An upgraded recommendation that supports the town's need for stability but allows for fluctuations in the RMLD business is as follows. Based on the current RMLD financial projections, move, we will move the recommendation to four mills per kilowatt hour for five years and reevaluate in four years for commencement in the next five-year term relative to continued fiduciary duty utilizing a unit mills per kilowatt hour formula. So that small little margin, absent of, you know, this now pandemic, gave us a little bit of room there to try to get the number closest to, it's actually slightly a little bit higher than what we pay out the town now. We could lock that in for five years. There's another number of systems, municipal lights, there's 41 in the state, who do use a 10-year, five-year lock-in, and they base their financials around that without increasing the rates to cover the payment, because by law, we're not supposed to do that. So Wendy and I feel like, based on, I mean, unless, unless of course, because we've been talking from the beginning, if there's a catastrophic event, no one may get any payment.
Right.
But we feel confident in the money that we have in our operating fund to be able to get through this pandemic and to also... to get through this pandemic and to also be able to provide for this recommendation. So, I'm speaking on behalf of Wendy as well, but you know, we both endorse this recommendation, but we pretty much have exhausted our analysis on this. The original study in 2018, pretty comprehensive what I put together, the assumptions and everything pretty much remain.
The one thing to add to that, if you could just add that although they didn't vote, the CAB did weigh.
I can read the CAB.
Yeah, they weighed in at the last meeting, we mentioned it briefly.
The CAB is, the CAB has not been given this memo and this recommendation. I know we were interested in discussing it here.
No, I mean, I mean to convey what they.
No, I know, but I haven't sent this to them, so they haven't reviewed this. So what I'm going to read is my excerpt of their minutes that are in draft that they haven't looked at yet.
Yep.
So that's why I can't put this in the board book.
Yep.
But you were there, Dave, so this was my understanding.
Yep.
Of the last set of proposals, including the town's proposals. The Citizens Advisory Board regarding the options for the payment to the town as follows. Nothing that would compromise the RMLD's ability to continue to provide dependable, reliable power at an affordable price for all towns. There is a preference or a desire that the payments not be tied to revenue but rather to kilowatt hour sales. The CAB acknowledged the town's desire for some predictability in the payment and is willing to consider a mechanism to allow for such predictability, i.e. setting some thresholds or basing payments on RMLD's budget planning process, an amount two, three, two to three years out that the town of Reading could take into their budgeting process. And four, a review of the formula should take place every few years based on the previous actual numbers. So that was their comments based on the last proposals from Wendy and I and the town's proposals.
And at this point, if I understand, you would like, we would all like them to also look at this new amended proposal that you've come, that you've come up with.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so that's what, so then, any more discussion on this?
So, then, if the 4%, what would be there based upon what that number is? What would be the payment to the town? Would it be a little more than what it is now?
It's slightly a little bit more, yeah. I don't have the table with me, so.
So, I read the memo, do I understand, because I know we talked about some, we're having a floor, so it'd be a straight payment for over the next five?
It would just be four mills.
So no matter what the kilowatt hours is?
Yeah.
It would be the four mills.
We would calculate four mills right now, and then it would stay that for five years.
So if we see a drop in the kilowatt hours?
Nothing changes for five years.
Nothing, so it's a set amount for five years?
Correct.
The set, the set factor, but the amount could, magnitude of the actual payment could go up or down of the below the line.
So it basically provides for?
Because it's four mills times whatever the kilowatt hour sales are.
Right.
But on the, on the other, on the other hand, in the proposals from January, it was 3.75 mills, and that would have come up with roughly the same magnitude of the below the line as it's been for the last two years, the 2.48.
It was slightly below, this one's a little slightly above, and the last proposals were 3.75, we had a couple of them, and it kind of ratcheted down to three and then stayed at three.
Right.
And you would, and you would change it every year based on your audited financials, and then there was another option where you just kept it flat.
Right.
Okay, and so this one is using that little bit of margin, bumping it up to four mills, locking it in for five years. And then in the fourth year, we would say, okay, based on the next five years, what can we afford?
Revisit it.
Revisit it.
Okay, so let me understand, you know, we got, we got the payment a little bit above where we are now, that's year one. Year two, same payment?
Same.
Year three?
Same formula.
Same, year four? Year five?
Same formula.
Same, but same.
Based on the previous year's kilowatt hour sales. So it could, it could do this.
You said it based on four mills, right now, same five years.
So that's going to be the same payment for the next five years?
Right, so let's say four mills of kilowatt hour sales is 2.5 million.
Okay.
It's 2.5 million.
Okay.
And four years, you say, okay, next time it's going to be based on four mills again.
Okay.
It's four mills, and you go forward.
So it's the same, it would be the same dollar amount?
Same dollar amount.
Okay. Sorry, I was, I misspoke.
When would that period begin for?
At the end of, well, we're actually locked in to the last payment of 2.48 million until the end of this year, correct? Correct.
Right.
The end of this calendar year.
Right.
Which is two payments per calendar year, but it's their fiscal year.
So which year's kilowatt hour sales becomes the basis for each of the next five years?
It has to be the previous audited financials.
So, the next, the next payment will be the same, that payment is, I believe, June 30th, or is it July 30th?
Okay, June and December.
June and December, so the next payment is already locked in. So this would be the payment that's coming in December.
Is a.
That would be effective for the December payment.
Yes.
I'll double check that, but I believe we're, there's a locked payment for June and December of this year, but let me double check.
And if we have a catastrophic event, all bets are off.
As always, I suppose, right? I mean, yeah.
Well, we have a pandemic going on now.
Right, yeah.
I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, where we're going to be if this thing can, I mean, I heard somebody the other day said this could have gone for 18 months.
Just to.
It's scary.
It is, yeah. I want to just make sure I understand, the year at which you will multiply it by four mills is 2020, is 2019, is, which year would it be?
It would be the last audited financials. So right now, we do not have audited financials yet for 2019. We're working on those.
Okay, so that, the year for which the sales will be used, it will be 2019?
It would be audited financials for 2019, correct?
So that the formula will not be based on a pandemic-related, if there's a pandemic-related change, if anything, it makes it higher because last year would be high because the economy was roaring, right?
Right, but if we get in, this kind of ties back into earlier discussion. If the revenue isn't there.
Right.
You have to remember, this bottom line is coming from the top line, the rate that the ratepayers are paying.
Yep.
I got the chart in my pocket, if we want to put it back up again, you know.
That's the second time you've threatened to do that.
I know.
We might have to let you do it. Anyway, go ahead, Phil, what's, so what's your point?
The point is, I'm thinking, you know, if this pandemic goes quite a ways and affects, you know, your commercial customers, you know, it could very well be that that payment may not be sustainable. I hate to say that. It's a concern, it's a concern I have.
May we speak?
Please, John.
Yeah, Phil, I agree with you. I think that there, something could happen, you just never know that black swan is going to come out and bite you, right? Like the Columbia Gas thing did years ago. And so, that's why there's no floor on that, correct if I'm wrong? There's no floor, in other words, if something catastrophic happens, all bets are off. We have to preserve the system, we have to preserve service to our customers, and just be, we just have to do it as it happened. Correct me if I'm wrong, Colleen?
No, that's, that's the assumption.
So if I can, if I can understand what those two points are, the formula would be fixed and it would be based only on 2019, and it would be the exact same dollar amount for the five years under this proposed formula.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess what we're all saying is if there is a catastrophe, we got to revisit the formula. There's nothing in our vote for five years that says we can't, in the event of a catastrophe, go back and change it, like any, like any board could at any time.
You, right, you, you have to.
Yeah, please, Dave.
Colleen, can I ask, why the five-year window? Why not just have it be four mills of the previous year's kilowatt hour sales that sets the pilot payment for the next year? And just do it every year? Why, why the five-year chunk?
Well, because we, we had that as an option, and what we were trying to do was take into consideration the town's concern about stability.
Right.
And I, and we had a discussion where I said, well, the town wants stability, but oftentimes, the RMLD doesn't know its stability. So we're looking at what we have, right now, we're not at a convergent state that's in my study. So for, so if we just do five-year chunks, we say, okay, for this five years, this is what we can afford, this, you know, we don't have to raise the rate to pay that.
Right.
And it's pretty much even with what we had been paying the town.
Right.
So it's not going up by CPI, you know, so there is a preservation there which stops the convergence. And by stopping it at four years or reevaluating in four years, you get to have the payment be somewhat consistent with the six-year plans that we put together so that we know what's hap, what we think our projections are for power supply, capital improvements, everything that we're trying to do in our business model, aside from a catastrophe, aside from a pandemic. Wendy and I feel like that this is a sustainable amount that we can do for five years.
Yeah.
And it provides the town the stability, and it doesn't take away from our stability for our plans in the short term, meaning one to five years.
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, you got to give the town stability. I mean, if you're going up and down each year, that's just not, not the way it should be for the town. You know, it should be stable. Should be some sort of stability they can depend on, so they know what they're going to get, because they have to set their budgets each year.
Yep.
Right.
I think that the first year one would be something like $100,000 more than it's been, because the, the thing, the proposals from January were 3.75, it came close to the, what the number is now, it wasn't quite there, but it was close. This would be 6.6%. So going from 3.75 to four is a 6%, 6.6% increase.
Right.
So it's going to probably add $100,000.
Well, my apologies for not putting the table in, but I can, I can get, I can get them from Wendy, and we can, you know, put it on the website tomorrow with this memo, it's all fine.
Yep.
You know, I'm not trying to make excuses, but between the emergency response teams that we've been having here every day and the one I'm on at the town, we're, we're really.
Right.
Yep.
You got, you had other issues to deal with.
We'll be busy.
There are other issues to deal with.
And one way to triangulate these concerns is to do a moving average, like you wouldn't do it just based on one year, every year and have it change a lot every year, but you also wouldn't want to fix it to 2019 if things went dramatically down. One way to solve that would be to do a three-year moving average. So the amount that it could go up and down would be very little, and you're already starting from a good chunk higher than what it is now.
I like that, Dave. Yeah, that's a good, that's actually a good solution, maybe you said.
The first thing someone's going to say is five years is too long. You know, you go to town meeting and someone's going to say, five years is a long period of time. Things, there's a pro and a con, it could go down.
Yeah.
Three years might be something, but how does three years impact Reading Light's long-term planning? If you set a three-year contract versus a five-year?
Well, we do six-year plans, we, we look at the year we're finishing up, and then we project out, we got the capacity markets, a lot of that's pass-through, but we do our capital plans for 20, 25 years, and then we back it in. What we've been doing with that is we've been doing failure analysis on every single piece of equipment, so, you know, you look at the polls, and again, because of the lack of maintenance. So we have the plan pretty tight, we do have some vacancies, but those need to be filled. So we feel like we have the expense and capital budget pretty tight, except for this pandemic, and so it fits into that. I mean, there are other utilities that lock in for 10 years, it's not that, it's not as much money, they don't pay out as much money as, you know, 2.5 million, but there are other utilities that lock in for 10. I mean, Wendy and I are willing to look at whatever analysis you'd want me to do. I mean, right now, today, we can do that. I don't know about tomorrow with the pandemic hitting us, I.
Right, yeah. But I think also, you know, to maybe address Bob's thing, if, the whole key thing is I think there has to be economic development, we've been saying that for a long time.
Right.
The towns have to get, do some economic development. I mean, if they're ever to go, maybe HQ, you know, the headquarters comes over and, you know, takes the property behind us or something, you know, we can always in year four, we look at the formula again.
Yep.
I mean, you know, we're saying we can look at if it goes down, but I don't see why we can't look at if it goes up.
Yeah, it's true. And the only, only thing I'd add to the mix, Bob, is that we've been running around this tree for three years about how to redo this formula. So, I just, it takes up so much civic life and political energy, and I mean that, like, we have like concrete things that we want to work on, the town does too, so there's, that's an argument for doing it for longer, knowing that if we have to change it, we can, the board can always vote and change it, but I think it's better to set something for longer.
Right.
Right.
Than to know we got to do this again in two or three years, you know what I'm saying?
Can I add a note about the economic, I mean, I know we had to cancel our home information sessions that we run in each of the towns.
Yep.
We did manage to get our one in Linfield, Chuck's group rolled out our new heat pump rebates, we added, thanks to the Climate Action Committee's input, we added electrical panel upgrades, whether it's a panel or a smart panel, for people, you know, maybe they want to add more electricity, they upgrade their panel. Chuck's group is working on outside appliances and stuff for this coming year for more updates and upgrades. We did send out a letter, I sent out a letter to each of the town managers with a request for information that I'm going to send out in April if I don't hear back from the towns, and that's building rooftops for our third solar, community solar. So each of the four towns, we targeted building tops. The town managers can get back to me as to whether they, they like the buildings I've selected, they want to add some, remove some, but that's a, you know, my letter says that's a win-win for the town for, you know, lease payment, property tax, and then we get to roll that, that off-take into our power supply portfolio, so there's, there's some room there for growth that, that we're hoping for. I mean, the electric vehicles didn't come in exactly where we thought, I mean, they're kind of delayed another year for that transition. We're working with Volta for implementing charging stations at Market Basket and Jordans and Walmart. So we got a lot going on in our campaign of electrification.
Final word.
Please.
Final word, Mr. Chairman, I just want to express my support for what the gentleman is presenting tonight.
Yeah, I feel the same way. And I would just ask, and with the support of the board, is to, if you could generate, you know, write out what the formula is, or maybe if there's a couple of different tweaks, there's a moving average one, there's one that's based on previous year, and lay out the tables, and we can have it on the next agenda, and hopefully, well, obviously, within the next month, we'll hear from the CAB again, we'll hear from the Select Board and others, and maybe we can even vote on, on a new formula in the April meeting.
Okay.
Potentially.
Does that sound?
Sounds fine.
I haven't told Monday to put that on.
Of course, yeah, 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 we have a month until the next meeting, I'm just saying.
I know, but I'll try to get it on there Monday, I just, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
If I can get it done by tomorrow.
It doesn't have to be tomorrow, I mean, just next week sometime.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so that's great. Anything you want to add, Mark Doxer, to all this? I don't know if you're still there.
Mark, you got your microphone?
He's been, he's been, he's been talking for 15 minutes.
I appreciate the discussion, you know, we're all trying to figure out how to, how to work through this, very much appreciate your, your understanding on this issue of stability. It just, it's, it's very helpful, and, you know, again, we're in very uncharted waters, you know, with the pandemic, and, you know, this is the, you know, this is a famous quote from Ed Franklin I've been using very frequently lately, and the quote is, "We must all hang together, most assuredly, we shall all hang separately."
Exactly.
Right.
Very good.
So on that note.
A little mic break, Paul.
Yeah, exactly.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we.
Move on.
Thank you very much. And so now, we're, we're just on your, your vacation, your report and your vacation motion here.
My report.
Right, I'll move that the board of commissioners allow the gentleman to carry forward any unused vacation time from 2019 into 2020 due to extenuating circumstances to be used in the second quarter of 2020.
Oh, that.
Second, you could, you could say, there you go.
That's a motion.
Is that right, are we good?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to keep coming back and asking, but it's like, so I made plans in April, I don't know if you can fly domestically, I don't know.
You cannot.
Yeah.
Well, you can, but.
So, I, maybe I'll just stay home and plant my garden, but.
Sounds good, we have a motion and a second, and. And, John?
Oh, just a quick question. Um, hi, we haven't met yet, I'm sorry. It's just, you might, hey, I just want to make sure you've been sworn in correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure. So otherwise you'd have to abstain, and I just want to make sure.
No, I, I was sworn in today.
Thank you.
So that's, we have a motion and a second?
Right. No, you've got to take a roll call.
We've got to take a roll call.
People on the phone. Mr. Pizina Y.
Mr. Talbada.
Bob Colter A.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Very good, then. Update on the ransomware.
Okay, so we had a cyber event and technically we can't really qualify it or classify it as a ransomware. I just want to explain to everyone that, you know, what your IT configuration is, what you do for backups, those type of things are things that you do not want to discuss publicly.
Right.
Okay? It creates vulnerability for the business and it creates vulnerability for the customers. We did not have any customer compromise of information. We actually don't even have any customer information that you wouldn't be able to get at the town hall, but nothing was compromised. It is, I, I do understand that the towns were actually asking me more to help them understand how to be better prepared. And so we had a meeting with all the town managers and we offered an IT meeting between the ITs between the towns to meet, to dive a little bit deeper into the incident. What I can say is that, again, I'm not even going to discuss what we do. What I can tell everybody out there is if you, we use the best of breed in all of our software protection. We're running an electric utility and we, we take backups very seriously and we believe in making sure that our software is updated exactly when it needs to because if you delay in, in updating patches and things like that, you create a vulnerability between.
Yeah, I know.
People that want to disrupt your system of knowing that there's an issue and you delaying to make that change. So I would just recommend to everyone and did it with the towns, we're, we're more than happy to help them. What lessons learned that we did have from this was, you know, I was home on a Saturday vetting through disaster IT recovery consultants. Not all IT consultants are disaster recovery, so you have to, don't, don't wait until it happens to try to start vetting that, so have one on, onboard. There's a little bit of discussion about communication, you know, letting the towns know, don't let the towns know, sending out press releases on, on, those are types of things that we're going to work with the IT consultant. That information comes from the FBI and Homeland Security, depending on what, what happened or what, what happens to you. But this happens to people at home, it happens to all businesses. This is fairly new within the last two years. If you use best-of-breed software and you use best, best IT practices, you have the best chance of, of it being a better outcome. And I'm very proud of my IT team and, and that's really all I got to say on that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Just a very, very quick one, actually. It's, it's addressed to Bob because I know you've spent a long time with National Grid. I don't know if you came across this in terms of what your colleague is mentioning, but if there are any best practices that you come across, it'd be, it'd be great to appreciate knowing about them and sharing them with us.
Well, one of the questions I had, I just didn't know if the IT team was there, was a vendor or it's internal?
We're using, we have an internal IT division and we have external IT consultants because we have IT infrastructure and then we also have NERC requirements with, with your electric utility. So it's a, it's a combination effort.
Right. I, I, you know, just standard, two, two-factor authentic.
Yep.
You know, authentication. Thank you, big word.
Yes.
Can't get it out of my mouth. But, but that's, that's pretty much the standard, that we, everything was analog, everything's moved, moving away from analog. Now you're making everything smart grid and you open up smart grid and the technology moves faster than the security. It's just always the way that it goes and you're always in the mode of playing catch-up.
Yes.
And that's just the, the, the wave of technology. You know, you want things quicker, faster, and you want to be able to hit a button and watch it, but at the same time, there's a backdoor, there's always a backdoor that you just don't realize. So you have to stay on top of it. And then there's a balance between how fast you go and how far you go and protection. And you can spend all the money in the world on protection, but it's going to be useless in a week.
Right.
Right, so.
I mean, hackers, yeah, hackers exploit exploits. So you, you have to, you know, that's their job. So, you know, we just want to protect the electric system and the reliability and, and we'll, we'll share whatever we can to help people, but there's lessons to be learned at the, at the end of any incident.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're ready for Chuck Underhill's report. And could I ask, before I forget, could I ask a small favor? I think we, there's a lot of this solar rebate fund unspent, right? The DOE R MLP.
Yes.
And if people don't do something by July 1, the money is lost and goes back to the state treasury? Is that also true?
That is currently true, whether or not DOE R will be able to get an extension.
Yep.
Of that grant program due to either extenuating circumstances.
Yep.
Right now or an interest in continuing the development.
So it could change. I guess my request was going to be maybe some, if it's okay with you, some kind of public release of, of a, of a press release or something that would let folks know that it could be a use it or lose it situation in the next three months. Because it would be a shame if.
Chuck can have Joyce do it.
Is that residential only or commercial?
It's, it's both, right? It's based on, it's a dollar 20 a watt. You know, it's a big rebate only, only for MLPs and the state is paying for it.
Yeah.
The grant is size-based, so as long as the system is under a certain size, it can be commercial or residential. Over that size, typically commercial systems, we offer a different rebate structure.
Yeah, I think the threshold's 25, 25 kilowatt hours, right? 10 to 100 kilowatt, not hours. So what would that be? Maybe 30 panels or something? No, more than that, 50 panels? Something like that?
Um.
So a good size, a decent size, people you would know.
Oh, yeah, I, I was just, yeah, 20. I, I was just kind of curious. I didn't know, where's the void, right? Is it on the residential side? Is it on the commercial side? If you're offering it, no one's asking for it.
Right.
Where's the?
Well, I mean, we had this discussion a little bit. I, I think what happens in an MLP is that, different from an IOU, is, you know, our, our prices are so much lower that there's a, a quicker rate of return when you install one on an IOU system.
Yeah.
It isn't that folks here, you know, that we compete with the IOUs and you're doing more solars than we are. I mean, you are, but it, it's based on the rate of return. I mean, if we have 15 cent power and an IOU has 23 cent, the customer has to invest pretty heavily in, in the system, not for much of a savings, you know, not much, for much of a return. And so I think that's what, what drives it. I mean, this is, this is why we've gone towards, and I wonder if we can use that money towards the solar garden if, if the residents are investing in the panels on the solar garden? Why wouldn't we be able to have them redirect the money through them for the, investing in the panel that they're going to own on the roof?
In terms of a rebate to them for the panels?
Correct. Do you look at that?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a great way of investing in green, you know?
New idea already.
Keep going.
Sorry. Well, thank you for that. So we're ready for your report at this point.
All right, but now you've got to get that done by July.
Well, I mean.
Come, Chuck, come. Pandemic or not, let's go.
I mean, I can write it for you if you want.
Thanks, Dave.
Just offering.
Well, what we have, we've begun by putting some comparative information where our budget, where power supply trends are going to kind of set the stage for what we see happening. We are in an unbelievably volatile period for power supply right now. I took a screenshot a couple of weeks ago, the end of February, and the peak period marginal energy price was about $15 a megawatt hour. Our budget, by way of example, was around $75 a megawatt hour on peak for the winter period. So it's crazy out there and the current Russian-Saudi battle to see who can hit the bottom of the barrel first is further exacerbating things. I stopped and got gasoline earlier this week, $1.97, nine a gallon. And my wife tells me it was $1.85, nine a gallon at Costco. I mean, none of us ever expected to see below $2 a gallon, certainly not in the wintertime.
I paid that this morning.
$2 a gallon or?
Under $2.
Under $2.
Yeah.
So very topsy-turvy pricing. So what we've got up here is a comparison of the temperatures that we've been experiencing. One of the things that we have noticed, that the wintertime average temperature has been significantly higher because most of the heating is fuel, oil, natural gas and propane. We don't see quite as much of an impact on that in terms of loss of electric sales. But it is a rather dramatic impact on the economy. So other companies are coming into the pandemic without the revenues that they expected to have coming out of the winter. So, and if you take a look, I believe that the right-hand side of the, the slide is the temperature versus the daily megawatt hour consumption for our MLD. So just some interesting ways of looking at the temperature and kilowatt hour consumption values that we see out there and why it's also very difficult at the beginning of the countermeasures to the pandemic to identify whether we're seeing kilowatt hour load reduction effects as a result of the pandemic. So, next slide, please. So we, we've taken positions in power supply through the rest of 2020. We are at about 95% of our anticipated portfolio requirements in terms of subscriptions. And we've gone ahead and mapped out our resources against the load so that you can see how they fit into this portfolio. I'm assuming that the other commissioners online have access to the presentations?
I'm pointing the camera at you.
Oh, okay. So, next slide, please.
Chuck, before you get off that slide, one of the things that I got, my clients is concerned about their supply chains. Is there any concern about any of these suppliers with the pandemic that's going on here?
Only that they're concerned that they get paid, but we have quite a variety in our mix. We deal with a number of different vendors and we deal with a number of different fuel The single largest vendor that we deal with is Nextera and they are the world's largest supplier of renewable and non-carbon energy. They are very financially stable. We don't expect that they will have any disruptions. Most of the energy that they are providing to us is all out of the New England region, so there's no transmission or importation. They have firm gas supplies behind that portion of the contract that is gas. We also take quite a bit of nuclear. And in the event that their supply is interrupted, we have a fixed delivery contract, so it doesn't matter what the resource is, it matters how much they deliver, where they deliver it and when they deliver it. So they would be able to fulfill any contractual obligations that we have out of nuclear resources if there's a problem with another fuel type in their supply chain. And the biggest nuclear resource is obviously about 45 miles north of here, so we do, would not expect any transmission problems. We're pretty comfortable that our resource portfolio is stable, secure and probably virus-proof, I guess, is the best way to look at it.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. This is looking at forecasted to actual. We start, obviously, with January. We track it through the year to see how well we're doing and over time, we will be able to answer the question of how much is weather-driven variance and how much is due to other factors, whether it is the programs that we're running to modify load profile or external factors such as the pandemic itself or collateral issues such as economic shutdowns. If you take a look at January, we budgeted a little over $2.5 million for the energy portion of our power supply portfolio. We came in very close to that. The cumulative differential is the little green line that you can't see on the graph. So budget to actual in variance for January, very close. Next, please. Our transmission costs, probably having more to do with the actual peak load for January. We're well below expectations, so that portion of the budget is higher than actual. And then the last is capacity. Capacity is fixed. Usually the differentials that we see in capacity are due to prior period adjustments that we get in the market because the capacity cost budget is fixed based on what our load was the previous summer and the auction results three years prior. So, I'm sorry? So total purchase power, we are ahead of where we expect it to be in terms of total dollars. One of the things that occurs to me is that we probably want to start looking at the average price since that will factor in the adjustments to load going forward as well.
How long was that contract?
Which contract?
The one that you, that you had with the power suppliers, the?
The, we have two bilateral contracts that are the bulk of our resource portfolio. One is with Exelon. That expires December 31 of this year. The other bilateral contract is with Nextera. That expires December 31 of next year. We have a number of segmented contracts for purchases that we have made under a TFA agreement and I would be glad to go into that offline with you, explain to you what we're doing with that program. We also have energy resources associated with non-carbon or from sources such as solar, wind and hydro generation. We are currently working with the legislature to resolve how we reflect those in our portfolio, what. what we call them. But those contracts run 10 to 15 years further into the future, but there are pieces of them based on the units that we're involved with. So we can get you the chart that shows the portfolio mix that we have going forward.
Thank you.
Dave, can I... So the pie chart portfolio that I think would help, Bob, has the contract and the start and end date on it, correct?
This... We have a pie chart that's got the start and end dates. So down at the bottom, we can see what's...
Move on, move on.
Yep.
Are we all set?
Yep. On the power supply, yes.
Thank you.
I don't have the agenda. I don't know whether the next one is the home...
Yes, it is.
It is.
It is.
Okay.
Keep going.
No, I am not.
In light of the pandemic, we'll skip the presentation.
Tracy came in and asked nicely if I was going to go through the 30-some-odd slides in the deck for the home presentation, and I said no. You have them in your packet. I'll just give a brief overview on what they are. But every year, in the first quarter, we go into each of the four towns that we serve and we run what we call, I believe, the new homeowners' presentation where people can come in, find out about the system, find out about the rates that we offer, payment plan structures, efficiency programs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the services and ancillary benefits to being an RMLD customer. Those are the 30 slides that have been used. We got through two of the presentations. Linfield was the first. Wilmington was the second. The Redding and North Redding presentations have been put on hold pending coming out of the social distancing situation that we're in now. So those are the 30 slides. I would encourage you to go through them at your leisure, and if there are questions that any of the commissioners have on that, feel free to pose them, and we'll get answers back to you.
Thank you.
Very good.
So we're ready to move on to the bids? Are we... Oh.
Yeah. So I'm Hamed again.
Okay.
I'm Hamed and Wendy, and everybody tonight.
Do you want to leave this that we can read the presentation on the board book, or do you want to get up and give the presentation?
I can go through the presentation real quick. You want me to do that first before the bids?
I mean, sure. We can do it quickly, right?
All right, yep.
Okay.
So, next slide. So just let everybody know, our outage management system in the new control room, Phase 1 of IVR, which is interactive voice response, is essentially the smart meter sends in a signal, it creates a polygon. We're notified that you're in an outage situation. We dispatch the crews. There's going to be a campaign that's going to launch April 1. It's basically going to say, do you want to be notified by email, text, or phone call? And then you're going to be able to know that you're in an outage situation. Now, these are unplanned outages, and that's how that works. The system is expected to go live July 1, you know, based on the campaign. Now, there's a Phase 2. Essentially, the next slide is Phase 1. It basically tells you how it connects and works together with the outage management system and the meters. We're using SpryPoint as the software for the customers to call in and sign up for this campaign. The Phase 2 of this system, probably not for another few months, but what that will do is this kind of the same concept, but yet I should be able to draw a polygon and send you out a message for a planned outage, a meter replacement for our system-wide meter replacement, peak shredding alerts, or any type of events and things. So part of the campaign will be like, do you want to be notified about those? But that will be in a second phase. But I think we're going to try to collect all of the information during the first campaign. So any questions on that? Second phase is customer notification system. Next slide just tells you how that's connected in with the SpryPoint software portal for getting the customer information. The next slide is a timeline. The next slide basically just shows you what the polygon will look at in our control room, SCADA, and what the customer would see on the customer portal, which would be on the website. Estimated time... I mean, right now, we're using Twitter, so we'll be... We may keep Twitter until we get to Phase 2. But a lot of times, we'll say, okay, you're... We send them a note, you're in an outage situation, right? So we get out there, we think it might be this, next thing you know, it's a pine tree. Now I got to go get a crane to move the pine tree. So the estimated time of restoration might be question mark. Then it might say an hour. Then I find out it's a pine tree with a crane. It might go to three hours, and then we'll update it as it goes, and that will continue to go out until it's restored. Okay? We do have, you know, smart switches and things like that, and eventually, you know, the computers will be able to send out estimates on its own based on repeated type of similar outage situations. The next one looks like Hamed's Vizio on how this is connected in for the OMS, IVR, and customer's notification system. The next slide gets into our routine maintenance programs. He's giving an update on tree trimming, how many spans we did. 15 spans a year to date. That's a five-year cyclic through all four towns. Inspections of the feeders. He's listing all the feeders that we've gotten done to date for 2020. Pole inspections, replacements, 277 of 518 failed have been set. 255 of 277 transfers have been completed. We completed our infrared scans and found no hotspots through the month of February. The manhole inspections that we talked about last month are ongoing, and porcelain cutouts, I think, were like 97% complete. Those are kind of being looked at as we upgrade the open wire and do other things that are in the system. Maintenance programs, this is kind of a... I told them on the phone tonight, this one's a little, I think, difficult to understand. I think what we're trying to get at here is, so far, year-to-date, we have replaced 12 aged transformers, but it's a moving target because every year, they get a year older. So basically, in five years, we've done 700 replacement of aged transformers. About 120 a year we're getting done. And right... So when I came here, we were about a 50% aged transformer. We're down to 38% of our transformer are aged over 25 years. We have a total of 4,057 transformers. So they're making great progress. I think over 705 years is great, 120 a year is really good. But we're trying to stay ahead of any type of overloading leaks. And with the new GIS system and OMS system, I got a transformer load management program going where we're looking at the loads during peak to see if the transformer's sized correctly. We'll send out a work order to get those upgraded, as well as any EVs that are coming down. That's why I base the EVs... We put it on a time of use rate so that we can monitor EVs being added to the transformers. The next slide is the reliability indices. We're still below national and regional averages in all aspects, so that's great news. Reliable system. The next one is talking about the outages year-to-date. I mean, I'm surprised that there's been no vehicle accidents. If you remember, last year, those climbed way high. Maybe it's the new no texting law is helping with that. So I was pleasantly surprised to see zero. But these are the outage causes of as of February 2020. And the next slide is just to show you that we completed the backup generator out here by Station 1. As you know, that unexpectedly failed. We had to dig it up. We rented one for a while, about $5,000 a month to rent it. This is the new one installed. And I guess I told you that when we were digging it up, we thought it was a foundation to the old stack, and it ended up being these big, huge granite cubes that I fell in love with. So now they're going to be decorating our patio. So we've got those saved in the backyard, and we're done.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any OFCs?
How many, Rob?
Do you have any OFCs in the oil-fuse cutouts in the underground system?
Um...
Like the old, instead of a vacuum switch?
There may be still some. I don't have that data, but I can ask Hamed in...
Yeah.
I have a question. I do have a question.
Yeah, it was a question on equipment. I know the porcelain cutout replacement, that's big in the industry. Get rid of all those parted porcelain cutouts. And then OFCs, they're just hazardous for the crews. So I know that there's a big push to get those out. So I'd like to see that on there.
Yeah, let me ask Hamed, and I'll email and let you know. I would think that they would be on there.
If you had any. You don't have a huge extent, a huge underground network. It's very limited, so yeah, I didn't think it'd be a lot.
But let me ask, because it's a good point.
Okay. All right, bids? Ready, bids, ready?
Dave?
About electricity and power, you might be too effective.
No, not at all. On the business side, absolutely. That's my lacking, that's for sure.
All right. Ready?
I think we're ready for some bids.
All right.
Phil, take it away.
Move that IFP 2020-4 for solid dielectric, hopefully I said that right, pad-mounted switchgear, be awarded to Innovative Switchgear Solutions, Inc., for $888,650, three-year contract pursuant to Chapter 164, Section 56D on the recommendation of the general manager.
Want a second bet, Bob?
Second motion.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This is the first time the RMLD is going out for a three-year contract on this. It's a total quantity for all three years is 14, five in year one and two, four in year three. The lead time right now is about 16 weeks. Two of the bidders were non-responsive. Neither included the required dimensional drawings, and RMLD purchased five solid dielectric switchgears last year. The unit price in 2019 was $66,650. Comparing to the 2020 unit prices, a 4% increase. Our year two and three unit prices are increased by 2% over previous year, but we feel like by locking in three years, we're locking in a better price. So that's where we stand with that. We have a switchgear...
Explain something to Bob. The reason why you see the recommendation of the manager is in this Chapter 164. The only jurisdiction we have is over the general manager. We can't reach in and tell Chuck what to do.
Okay.
We have to go through the general manager.
That's why I was being nice when I asked.
Although Chuck would listen. Sure. You got to move this.
Definitely overstepped my bounds. How many bids came in for this?
It's on the back. So we got Innovative Switchgear.
Yeah. Only two bids.
Innovative Switchgear and Wesco.
Okay. We're happy with this? Everybody all set?
Yep. Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Talbott, aye?
SCI.
Aye.
Perfect.
Mr. Coulter, aye? And Mr. Stempak is still in the room?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you vote? John, are you still there?
He has to tell you he has your microphone off.
You just have to say, "Mr. Stempak, aye."
I don't see him there.
Aye.
There you go.
Okay.
We just voted to sell the utility to National Grid.
Ready for the next one? Mole.
Move that IFP 2020-5 for pole-mounted transformers be awarded to Graybar Electric Company, Inc., for $220,589, and Wesco Distributing, Inc., for $6,787, for a total of $227,376, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 56D, on the recommendation of the general manager.
Want a second, Bob?
Second motion.
Yep.
You can see the list on the back. Graybar is the lowest responsive proposer on the single-phase pole-mounted transformer. Wesco was the lowest responsive proposer on the three-phase pole-mounted transformer. Delivery is nine weeks from Graybar and 14 to 16 weeks from Wesco. And do you want any price comparisons from 2018 or anything? I have ones for each of the values, but if you're interested in it.
Well, I don't. I'm always curious how many people bid, though, so if you could just add those to these.
On the back, okay, on the back of your sheet here?
Yep.
These are all the bidders.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, so Graybar...
They're on your...
It's on the computer. It's on the iPad. Yeah.
Okay, so Graybar, Wesco, Stewart, C. Irby, Howard Industries, Power Sales Group bid twice, two different bids.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Talbott, aye? You have to say, "Mr. Coulter, aye," for some reason. Only Phil understands.
Coulter, aye.
And...
Mr. Stempak, aye.
And...
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Thank you.
Ready for the next one? Move that IFP 2000...
Something's wrong with my microphone.
Okay, yeah. Move that IFP 2020-6 for pad-mounted transformers be awarded to Wesco Distribution, Inc., for $220,756, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 56D, on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second.
Second motion.
Okay, so Wesco was the lowest responsive proposer for all transformers. Two companies were non-responsive. Delivery is 12 to 14 weeks, and I had listed the price comparisons if you wanted to see them. Don't forget that when we put these things together, we actually put what you approved in the budget and that these are below. So the budget for the site, for example, was $314,000. It came in at 2:20.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Talbott, aye?
Coulter, aye?
Mr. SCI.
Okay.
SCI.
Thank you. That's motion carry. All these are 5-0.
Move that IFP 2020-7 for one Digger Derrick truck with trade-in be awarded to Minuteman Trucks, Inc., for $284,555.67, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 56D, on the recommendation of the general manager.
Okay, so Minuteman was the lowest...
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I got a second.
Minuteman was the lowest responsive proposer. All bids except one were responsive. Delivery is 40 to 48 weeks. And everybody knows what a digger is, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Talbott, aye.
Coulter, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye. Mr. SCI.
Okay. Move that IFP 2020-10 for grounds and landscaping services be awarded to Pathfinder Tree Service, LLC., for $125,283, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B, as the lowest responsible responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Okay. So grounds and landscape services include spring and fall cleanup, weekly maintenance of lawns, bushes, trees, shrubs, as well as hardscape maintenance. Other services include clearing and maintaining brush and around fenced areas. Landscaping is required on other properties in response to environmental issues, construction damage, or any vehicle incidents. Weekly maintenance is scheduled to perform for 27 weeks to eight properties. The properties consist of eight Ash Street campus, Adopton Island, three substations, one former substation in Linfield, and two right-of-ways.
And it's for three years, right, if I recall?
Correct. One of the six bids received, two were non-responsive. I'm not reading their name, but...
Okay. And this was like a little less than last time? I feel like this is the second or third time I've seen the landscaping contract. Is this lower than it was last time?
Was it lower than last year?
No, lower than the previous three-year.
2017 was 110, 2020 was 125.
Okay.
So in three... Ms. Pacino, aye?
In three years, it's gone up.
Okay.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
Okay, Mr. Talbott, aye?
Coulter, aye.
Okay. That's it? Now, I thought... Now, I thought we had discussed putting the reorg on the agenda. Is it?
It's the last item on the agenda.
I got you. Are you sure you want to do it?
Yeah, we can do it now, or we can do it at the beginning of the next meeting. I mean...
How do the guys in the field form about this?
It's on our sheets from the...
It is? Okay, good. I just...for some reason, it's not on mine. I don't know why. Unless I'm blind. What's that? Yeah, mine's...it must be an old version. Does anybody want to do this now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay? Anybody?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. So, I...one of the things, Bob, a tradition here at RMLD is the peaceful transition of power. Okay? So, that's a tradition that we like. So, it means that, like the presidency, the board chair steps down every year unless there's a bitter fight over...anyway, I'm just kidding. Does anybody have any nominations for...
I have a nomination.
Okay.
Although he's not very good at working his webinar microphone, I think he'd make a fine chair of the board of commissioners of RMLD, and I'd like to nominate one, John Stempak.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I will second that nomination. Mr. Chair?
Okay. And John is the vice chair now? And do we need a separate one for vice, or do we need...is that all...how do we do this?
I'd like to nominate someone for vice chair.
Okay.
Nominate Dan Hennessy, vice chair.
Okay.
Yep. That's fine.
So, we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Second motion.
I'll move to close all nominations, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I accept that motion. And does that mean we're ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the nominations that have been made?
Yeah. Aye, Mr. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Talbot, aye?
Coulter, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye?
There we go.
Mr. SCI.
Okay, good. So, I hereby...you know, we were gavel-less because it's a vector.
Just as an added point, I will assume the secretary position for all of next year.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, we don't have to rotate it. I will assume the secretary for all.
Okay.
Okay?
So, what else do we have to do here? General discussion? The next meeting's Thursday, April 16th. Are we good with that?
I may be brain-dead.
Okay. Assuming we're all still here, and then Thursday, the 21st. What?
Be positive. We're all going to be here.
The back-to-back? Oh, May 21st.
Yeah, May 21st.
One month.
Yep. And then, John, are you able to cover the April CAP meeting?
You know, I can't do the 16th, Dave, on the next meeting, and I know we might have a big vote there. Is there any chance you could do the following Thursday?
I think, as far as I'm concerned, yes. Does anybody care?
Let me take a quick look at the...
Okay. Well, you know, you're going to run in potentially the town meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, the 27th is the...
The Monday...town meeting goes Monday and Thursday, so...
Okay.
I was wondering if the 16th may be town meeting also.
You want to move it up to the 9th?
No.
No?
No.
You need to what?
The CAP, right? The CAP's got to meet before now.
Well, could they not meet on the 9th? And we could ask them, right? Maybe we can...
Will we meet on the 21st?
We'll figure it out offline, I guess, right? Talk to the cab and...
Can I make a comment before we go? So, I was told that it's possible that I might be doing a taped presentation. The financial auditors are not audit...audited financials are not going to be done yet, but usually, I do a presentation at the town meeting. I'm probably going to do taped and submit it as a taped.
Okay.